We are live.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council Work Session for Tuesday, March 30th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Crossley?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, your quorum is present.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say it's been a week since I had my shot last, last week. I'm not sure where I was after getting the second shot, but I was having a hard time concentrating. So I apologize that I, that things didn't go as smoothly as they might have otherwise. So that being said, item number three is the Equity RFP discussion. So I would like to, you know, who would like to begin that discussion?
So I think I'm, Councilmember Cardini mentioned via email that she had some edits to send. I'm not sure that they've been sent yet. And so I'm wondering if we can get close to finalizing a draft. And then I know originally I think our goal is to do that for this meeting or the next count. It was this meeting and then, but we don't have the edit, the comments from Councilmember Cardini yet. And so I'm wondering if we want to review the draft and finalize it next week or try to move forward. I'm open to either.
Well, and I know she said she was going to try to, I checked at five, I haven't seen them. But what I could do, if the council's okay with it, is, is I've, I've got several comments so far. And then once I get Councilmember Cardini's comments, we can basically send out another document. I don't think that's a bad idea because I know she said she has quite a few comments. But I mean, I just wanted to put it on here just in case you guys were okay with it. But it seems like we've got a few comments, so that, that to me is fine, whatever you want. Once I get her comments, I can incorporate those along with everybody else's so far. I think I saw four or five different emails come in and then resend another draft. And if we need to have further discussion, that's fine. Otherwise, if everyone's comfortable with it, we can send it out.
Yeah. I guess just one additional comment. Jenny, you had mentioned about identifying a little bit more clearly about the, the price, differentiating the price for each section. And I thought the same thing, and I thought, well, maybe I'm just not reading it right because I'm not familiar with reading RFPs, but I kind of felt the same way, that we might need to add some additional instructions for that.
And I think it seems like the way you have it set up, it'd be pretty easy just to like specifically say, could you please provide separate pricing for three A, B, C, you know, D, whatever? I think that it should be pretty simple.
And if you recall, when-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so when we had the RFP for the citizen survey, remember one of the problems we had was trying to compare apples to apples. So I'll definitely make that more clear. I think that's a great comment.
Do we want to try to set a deadline for comments if possible, so we can keep moving or? Like Friday, does Friday seem?
Yeah.
Fair. Cool.
Um, but it might be helpful just to touch on the pricing structure. When I've drafted these for work, we normally include like an attachment that lays out the budget and it's like a table within a word document that they just are expected to fill out. And so then you can compare table to table across vendors. So then that way you can avoid the, the issue we had with the citizen survey one. That might help us.
We'll get something like that and then, and then whenever it goes back out, if you'd like to modify it or if you want to send me something as a, as a sample, what you're, if you have something in particular in mind, we can make sure to incorporate that.
Yeah, that's, that would be extremely helpful to, you know, to make sure that they're bidding the same scope of work. It's like construction bids. If they're not in the same format, you, you can't draw any conclusions, so yes.
One question that I had is if it's possible, if anyone knows, once this is finalized and we're ready to, you know, solicit bids or proposals, if, if anyone has any firms in mind, please let me know. I'll make sure to include, include those. Otherwise, we're basically just, you know, advertising in a paper and putting it in a newsletter. So I think we really need to go out and actively pursue proposals.
And I would think an appropriate course of action is to take a look at ones that have been conducted by other cities and see who the consultant was on that. I think that would give us the best idea of what their finished product would look like. So, so we've decided that Friday then is the deadline, five o'clock then on Friday for, for comments. And in the meantime, we're going to research other firms. And Sarah, you're going to help put together a budget worksheet so that the pricing structure is consistent. Great. So in that case, is there anything else with, with regards to the RFP discussion? Okay, well then let's move on to the review of the council town hall responses. And I believe that this was on, online, so people should, yeah, was, was, were these notes, okay?
The, the post-it notes, meaning that the questions, and in some cases you'll see there were just kind of a statement, you know? And again, you'll see every department has, has replies. But if we remember, we were deciding how to do it and I said, hey, I'll just throw a draft together and then that way at least it'll facilitate discussion. I'm not by any means comfortable saying this is the council's opinion, but I tried to answer as best as I thought the council might. And so I'm an open, open book here. If you guys want to add any changes or any edits, my thought would be we could post these and maybe even create a separate link on our webpage to indicate, you know, here are some responses and here are some actions that we're doing from our town hall in 2020 due to coronavirus or the pandemic. We have, we have not yet held our town hall. However, we are anticipating having a new city manager onboard and having a town hall this summer. I'll say probably late summer and we're planning on making this an annual thing. If you're interested in, in the questions and answers, please click this link. Just, I mean, I know that seemed kind of long, but maybe like I said, create a little separate page. That was my thought and Laura's thought. And if anyone has any other suggestions, I'm, again, I'm, we're totally open.
I've got just a few comments and suggestions. First, thank you for putting in all of the effort to, to start this document. It looks like it took, took a while to compile and, and get it to this point. So thank you for that. I was thinking that certainly just around organizing, that if we organize all of the similar questions, as much as you've already done with the city council, police department, things like that, I think we can further consolidate the questions and comments under headings and then you wouldn't have to indicate, see response to question one multiple times. You could just quest, lump all of those questions together and then create a general response to the, to sort of the spirit of those questions.
That's an excellent suggestion. We'll do that.
Yeah. And then also as the, the questions, if they're referring to specific either places in the ordinances or something like that, then we could link directly from that section to the section in the ordinances to make it easier for folks to follow, sort of follow that thread if there was questions surrounding that.
Those are great ideas, Sandy. I honestly didn't have a chance to get through them yet. I, so I will, if it's possible to have some time to kind of read through them and provide some comments.
Yeah. And if you would like to do it, I believe I sent that out via, that via email with an updated agenda. We can just do the same thing there. Just if you want to just go to that same word document and make suggestion changes, whatever is easier and we'll, we'll get that done. But for the most part is, is there any, any questions, people, especially pertaining to the, what the council said that, you know, maybe I'm off base or hey, you forgot a major part of this answer or no, we don't agree with this. Or I mean, we, we pretty, pretty good with the responses and aside from, you know, as Sandy said, organizing it in a much, in a more efficient manner, maybe adding some additional links for references. Are there any other comments?
No, I, I just know that I need to add some information on item number 14, which I will, I'll take care of right away.
One thing I noted too, and this, I, this happened a lot since that settlement, but, and I've gone back and looked is that for number two, if you read the settlement, it doesn't say we can't modify that ordinance. We just can't modify it back to what it was. Um, so you could modify it in a way that makes it, you know, better or whatever, so to speak, you know, more in line with what they would want. I think we just have an obligation to maybe notify them. So that is something I, I'll comment on that and link the, where in the settlement it says that.
Okay. We're talking about the nuisance settlement?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Yeah, any comments would be great.
So at this point, where would, where would we like to go with this?
I think what I'll do is I'll wait if possible. And, and since we've got comments on the RFP for the equity this Friday, and that's obviously, you know, more of a pressing matter. What we could do is once that's done, maybe the following Friday, we could say comments on this if, if the council's in agreement. And then that would give you a whole nother week to, to look at these questions and then just send me comments and I'll do the same thing. I'll, I'll incorporate those comments into a revised document and then I'll send it out to the council. And then we will create that web link and send an email alert letting the council know and, and a, and a link to the, the site in case you'd like to see it. We could even let you look at it before it goes live if you're concerned, but it's going to be pretty simple.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I had a question just about the new city resident packets. We have new ones, is that correct? I haven't seen them. I just wondered, I thought we were supposed to be getting a, you know, a look at that to see what was in them. Is that, is that accurate?
I'll ask Laura, I'll ask Laura and I'll email that out.
Okay, because I, I don't remember ever getting it, but I heard we were going to. And I thought Jenny was supposed to be looking at it or something. Does that sound familiar? That Jenny was looking at that, remember that?
Packet.
Heard about it.
I think it's the boards and commissions packet?
That's what Jenny was looking at, yeah. And I've got, that's coming out. If that's not coming out tomorrow, it's coming out in the next couple, next two days.
But no, I think you're right, Karen. We were going to just see what was in that thing. What was going to be in that, I think, was the information about opting out of a paper copy of the Maybelline. Like that's where we talked about maybe being like when you come to get your-
Yeah, I, that was the thought. I, I had notes, but you know what? Sometimes my notes might be wrong, but I was thinking that, that we were going to see what was in the, the new resident packets that they were beginning, but I don't know. Are there even, even any new resident packets? Is that a thing?
They have one, they have one. I, I can't tell you what's in it. It's been so long since I've looked at it, but I'll, I'll, I'll pull it out. I know Laura works with Karen Schide on that. And so that's why I said I, I'll talk to Laura and find out what, what it is we're sending out. And then I'll send it, send it out to you. And then also, but Councilmember Crossley referenced the board and commission packet. You should be getting those shortly. I don't have an exact date, but I'll definitely get those to you. And then if you have comments or would like to see additional information added, we'll, we can absolutely do so.
Yeah, I think the main thing that we need to do is make sure that all the resources that are available for our citizens are included, utility assistance, this new rental assistance program, anything like that needs to be, they need to see that when they move in so that they know it's available.
We'll do so.
Any further discussion on town hall responses and related topics? Okay, then Karen didn't have to wait too long for us to get to the police and fire pension, the public works departments budgets. So who, who would like, Anthony or Karen, you want to start?
Karen, if you want to start with police and fire pension, please.
So the police and fire pension is actually pretty similar to last year's. We, you know, our pensioners haven't gotten an increase, so the dollar amount is what it is. And I multiply their monthly payment by 12 and that's where I came up with that number. The only difference is the police and fire loggers payments. I did increase them because we have a projected pay increase in the other funds. So we have to, you know, compensate for that over here as well. But otherwise, there are really no changes. And just for informational purposes, our pension trust account, as of the end of February, which is the most recent statement that I have, we have 14.5 million in reserve in that account. So we do have sufficient funds to cover this for, you know, several years to come. So, but the revenues we get are also their, their property taxes.
Any questions on that? Do you have a quick, yeah, I do have a quick question about the reserves. So if I remember correctly, like the standard accounting practice for reserves is you want to have like between five to 10% in reserves, is that right? Am I remembering that correctly?
Of operating budget?
Yeah.
Um, so the GFOA, which is the kind of the guidelines that we go off of, they recommend 25%.
Okay.
As far as our general fund reserves, we have more than that. This is, these are funds that were specifically contributed by former employees by property tax that specifically assessed for pension. And then it just kind of built up over the years because this is our old pension that we don't, like we're, we switched everybody to loggers. So this, we have, I think, I want to say 22 people who are still on the old pension. And some of them are pretty young, so we'll have them for a while. But then the only other thing, like I said, that we pay out of this is we'll pay for our actuary report and our OPEP report every year that specifically relates to the pension. And then we, we pay the loggers, but employees also pay for loggers as well. So there's an employee portion that's not budgeted over here because it comes directly from the employees. So does that answer your question?
And it's kind of unrelated, but it somewhat related. So even though our percentage is, is good, we, we were notified a while back by Standard and Poor's to basically quit dipping into the reserve. So even if the number or the percentage is okay, we don't want to have to go through a, a rating downgrade. And Karen, we're getting reviewed every year. Is that accurate now, at least for the near future? Do we know how long that's going to last?
Nope. I guess until they feel like we can go back to the three-year review cycle. So I, I imagine we're going to have to, you know, continue to not dip into general fund reserves. And it's the general fund reserves that they're concerned with. As far as this account goes, we have such a high reserve balance and it's invested. So we're earning money on top of that, that they're, they're not worried about this and they're not worried about our other accounts either. They're worried about our general fund because we dipped into reserves for a number of years. So my, if I had to answer that question, Anthony, my guess would be that we'd have to have probably three to five years of not dipping into general fund reserves before they'd switch us back to the three-year review cycle. That would be my guess. They haven't even told me that that's true. But I mean, in my opinion, that, that sounds great, so.
And one other thing, just so everyone's aware, the fire chief and Marty are, have been and are looking into potentially a payout to pension, pension people that have been in this for a long time. And, and they're, because of the, with the fund balance, what the, the thought process is, is to get the fund established, some of the people that were in it early, put in a tremendous amount of money, much higher percentage than current employers are doing. So because we have a fund balance, the idea is to essentially give back to those people that really made this happen and, and honestly didn't get the, the same benefit that an employee that starts it today or even an employee that started it 10 years ago would have gotten. And so that would be something just to keep in mind when you see this reserve. I think it's a good idea by the fire chief and, and former city manager Marty Corcoran, and they're, and they're looking into it. And they were actually doing it last year at this time. And then, and the market kind of went down a little bit. And then it's obviously gone back up and then some. So I anticipate that within the next two or three months. It's one of the tasks Marty had when he came back. And obviously the, the fire chief is still out on medical leave, but once he comes back, I anticipate that'll be coming in the next couple of few months.
Just one comment, since Karen, you're working on the updated budget plan or the updated budget format, maybe update the description so that it states that this is the previous, I guess that, that it doesn't cover everyone, maybe to clarify that. Because I forget that every year and it's not until you actually say that every year that I remember. Oh yeah, because then we have loggers too.
Yes, I, I will happily do that, just so we can differentiate. Now, just so that, like we all understand, the loggers employer portion for the current employees comes out of this fund because of that special tax that is assessed that we can only use for that purpose. So that is for the current people. So we do use a portion of it for the current employees to pay in, you know, the employer portion of the loggers. But generally speaking, this is also, you know, it's our old pension as well, the old pensioners are. And I, I'm not calling them old. I'm just saying, people who fell under the old pension plan are budgeted in here as well.
Are there other questions regarding police and fire pension? I don't see anything. So my guess is that Anthony, you're going to address the public works?
Sure.
Budget?
Yeah, for the most part, the public works budget, if you, if you look at it, it is, it is, there's really nothing new to this. We basically kept expenses in line because I'm not sure where revenues are going to fall out. And most of the capital purchases will be when we do our capital fund, the 2,400 fund. So this is basically just day-to-day operating costs. You'll notice over the years, especially if you go back to 17 and 18, we're at 1.7 and we've gone down to 1.2. Some of that is, if you remember, we transferred some into the parks capital. Again, protect the general fund, that's, that's our main concern right now. Not that we're not concerned about the other funds, but we had to get that in line, so we didn't lose our credit rating. I'm getting, we had inquiries last week about sewer laterals. A lot of inquiries about parks not being open. And so I had Karen pull some of the old figures and just so everyone's aware, we are right now down, as of tomorrow, not today, because John Meyer, our superintendent, retires after today. We're down, still down two employees for, to get to 16. We, our last advertisement was about, we've advertised three times in the last six months. Our last advertisement, we had two applicants. It, I think it's a product of two things and, and the biggest is, you know, it, it doesn't pay well. But secondly, when the, the trades are doing well, that's when you have a tough time finding maintenance employees. And, and right now it's anyone that's doing any, you know, home improvement projects understands right now that there's a high demand for, for, for people that are handy. And those are typically the best public works maintenance employees. And so we've got another ad out, we waited about a month, but we've got another ad out. And, and as of today, I haven't seen an application come in and that's, that's obviously frustrating. Actually took a step to call a former employee who went back to school. He's an excellent employee and we're happy he went back to school. But I, I said, hey, would you, would you like to work for us this summer? And, and, and he said, yeah, I would like to if that's okay. So I said, we need the help. And, and then hopefully what that'll do is I'll buy me some time to get into the fall when it's a little easier to find somebody. Our, our most recent hire process, we had, we'd hired two new employees in December. We had two in the same interview process and the last two after that, we couldn't get anybody. So it's a bad time of the year to hire maintenance employees. And unfortunately, we, we just had a retirement after today and then we, we still down one. But overall, the public works department is down from the years because people were asking about that at the last meeting. Roughly, if you go back 10 years, we, we historically had 21 employees. And over the years, just with tight budgets, now we're down to 16. I believe we can still get the work done. We're looking at other methods of, of contracting out. But like many other departments, Karen Dilber's department in particular, we could use more employees. And so when people say, you know, why don't you hire more employees? It's really, it's a, it's a product of, we don't have the money. And if we have to hire somebody, we have to look to essentially displace or room or, or eliminate another position. One other item in here, that's, that's, that's in, in this budget, that's not maintenance workers. We put the inspector back in. I'm going to get that presentation that Councilmember Crossley asked about. We will look at that. No matter what, I probably wouldn't plan on hiring that inspector until the fall anyway, for the very same reasons. Because even when the economies do well, Councilmember Crossley, you may be aware, sometimes the, the electrical and the plumbing inspectors, they'll go out and work in the private sector. Because again, if they can make a lot more money, they'll do that. And so now is not necessarily the best time to hire. Plus, we've got still people that don't want us in their apartments and/or homes doing inspections. So we're trying to honor that and respect that and do those, either, either put those off or do those virtually. So I don't anticipate the inspection program wrapping, ramping back up to where we were pre-COVID levels until, for at least another six to nine months. So we put that person in there and if, if, just in case the council says, hey, no, we want to keep this position, then they're in there and there's nothing, we, we don't need to make any amendments or anything like that. If you say, you know, we don't need that position, let's just give it another try for another year. We could do that administratively and just not hire somebody and then report back if we're having complaints or problems. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that was in there because I know that was a, a previous discussion. And honestly, the, the, there's not anything new in this budget at all, except just day-to-day expenses. And unless anyone has specific questions.
Well, you know, what I'd like to know for reference purposes, how did the number of employees that Maplewood has compare to similar communities? You know, essentially Richmond Heights and Brentwood?
Well, we're, we're a lot lower. I'll use Karen's department. It used to be four employees and, and then they went down to three. Karen's essentially a department unto herself. She also has another employee that basically works for Karen part-time, but then also works the front counter as well. There's no, there's no comparison, public works. They have many more employees. Now, they did lay off 18 employees at Richmond Heights. Brentwood, if I had to, if I had to, I think they're, they've got around 112 employees, 110. Please don't quote me on that. It's, it's very close. We have about 72. A good indicator is to look at your total personnel cost and how much personnel cost percentage-wise. We're about 74%, which is extremely high. We're about seventy four percent, which is extremely high. You want to be around, Karen, please add on if I'm saying anything incorrectly, or you have anything to add. Want to be around sixty eight or seventy percent. And really what that means is when you have a cut or would like to buy something different or add somebody, there's really no other room aside from cutting personnel. And and the reason it's so high is if you think about the services we provide, it's basically the people. I mean, the police department, the fire department, you've got thirty two and twenty one employees in those departments alone. And that's why personnel costs are are such a large percentage of a of an overall budget. Karen, do you have anything to add to that?
I'd just like to add that our personnel expenses are higher than comparable communities because we have fewer people who are doing the same jobs that other cities are doing with additional personnel. So their salaries are lower because they're paying more people less money to do the same jobs that we're paying fewer people to do, you know, better because they're doing multiple things, so.
That we might, you know, when we do the citizen survey, we really need to concentrate on on what services we provide because if we come to a point where we have to reduce you know, city services, we need, that's going to be a very tough decision. And we're going to need citizen input on that.
What right now, again, we're looking at alternative ways and using sales tax accounts more. So for example, I'm going to move another fire or another police police officer in the Prop P Fund. Okay, that's another way to essentially free up general fund money and put that in the Prop P Fund. We're also, and we're not there yet, but we're looking at sewer laterals is is a is a problem program, meaning we don't bring in enough revenue. Right now, it's also manpower to do them, but really, we don't bring in enough revenue either. The only other alternative, what a lot of other cities do, for example, is they'll contract that out. But that is much more expensive than hiring additional employees. It's usually not the case. It's just so expensive. So a lot of other cities will do that. Or a lot of cities, as we talked about in the past, will will cap that amount that you that you would do and for what Maplewood's doing and trying to do for people that are less affluent and or senior citizens or people on fixed incomes. I'm here to tell you, some of these sewer laterals could put somebody out of their home if you say we're going to put a cap on it. If that's the council's decision, that's totally fine with me. But I don't believe the council wants to go there from our prior discussions. So Karen and I are looking at basically doing a transfer from our twenty four hundred capital account into the sewer lateral. But we want to make sure when we get to that account that the council's okay with that, but I'm just giving you a little prelude to what we're going to propose. And and the thought process is is it would would allow us to have the money necessary to hopefully catch up because if somebody has a sewer lateral and they've been on a list for two years, even if it's running to me, that's that's not acceptable. And that's really where we are in some cases. It's a money and right now a manpower issue, but we're going to propose that in our twenty four hundred account. And in the past, if you, we've talked about, sometimes the general fund supplemented the sewer lateral program, and that's again, another one of the many reasons why we had to our standard empires is is looking at us because our general fund was continually slowly getting depleted. So we were saying no more for the general fund loaning this, but what other accounts are eligible? And we believe the capital development account is, what that may mean is you funnel, you know, forty thousand dollars in every year. And after, you know, six to seven years, maybe you do one less block of concrete street. That's about what that would equate to, you know, a block in concrete, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to me, I would rather have the sewer lateral list whittled down a little bit and do one less block every six years. And I wouldn't have said that probably ten years ago, but we're slowly getting better and better on our roads. I mean, and a lot of these roads we're constructing should be in place anywhere from thirty five to fifty years.
So just to touch on the staffing issue, because when I think about some of the areas that we we struggle in the most, like I think about the public works department, since it has so much interface with the services that we provide. Is there any opportunity for us to potentially like work with another municipality to maybe have some of their public work staff work for us on like a temporary basis? Or we do some sort of like staff sharing? If the if that's if the that particular staff would be interested in like additional hours, like on the weekend or something, just to give our folks a break?
I could absolutely look into that. I mean, right now, and it's 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 an unfortunate reality, a lot of times when people are deciding between, okay, I've got an EMS call, do I want to make sure they get there at a particular time, meaning fire? Okay, there's a crime and, you know, taking place, and how long is it going to take someone to get there, meaning police? Usually people are a little more agreeable or understanding to say, hey, the pothole might not get fixed right away. Or my sewer lateral is still running. It's not backing up, it's not a problem, and I'm on the list a little longer. It's just unfortunately, it's kind of that balancing act, you have to kind of figure out what you want. I have no no problems looking into that. I was just surprised considering all the layoffs, a lot of the layoffs in a lot of these municipalities. In fact, Richmond Heights, we'll use them for example. I think nine of the eighteen were in parks or public works. And so that's what surprised me so much that we didn't get applicants from some of these other cities. One of the employees I hired, I mentioned back in December, was a eighteen or twenty year employee from the city of Ellisville. So I was very, we were very fortunate to get to get him because he was already trained and he'd already done all, he'd already driven all the trucks, snow, snow, snow removal, everything. It was basically, he just kind of, you know, fit right in. And so, but I've only had, I've only had one other municipalities maintenance staff apply. It's just unfortunate. I could talk with Richmond Heights, I could talk with Brentwood and do that. I know the, I know the directors there pretty well, I'll ask.
That, and I know the county public works department director as well. And it's just, it's one of those like constant battles within government of you always know that the work could be less and the money is more in the private sector. And so like that, that is a hard thing to fight against. And so we might be able to incentivize some employees who are working in government right now to come do some extra work for us.
I'm just not sure how it'll be handled from an insurance standpoint. And when we talk about sewer laterals, again, I'm open for, you know, park maintenance and things like that. Sewer laterals right now are, we know, you're you're basically we're such an old city, anytime you're you've got an operator basically on the backhoe, you are digging around gas lines, water lines. And in fact, there's only two employees right now at Maplewood that that even use the backhoe, because again, it's, it looks simple, but not when you're talking about, you know, being that close to a gas line or a water line. And I mean, I even, we're actually looking at purchasing Brentwood's trenching equipment. They did a, they did sewer laterals for a while themselves, and there was a collapse. And the person was okay, but I guess they had to collapse up to their knees. And they said, that's it, we're not doing those anymore. So a lot of cities don't even do the sewer lateral work we do. And and if you look at our tree lawns and how narrow they are and all the sycamore trees and all the massive oak trees that were basically planted over laterals, you don't have that same situation. So we do have a lot more sewer problems than a lot of other cities. Number one, the age. And number two, and probably most importantly, the the trees, that that's really what causes these collapses for the tree roots. But I'm open to any suggestions.
A couple of thoughts on the sewer lateral program. One is, you know, we have a fifty dollar fee on our taxes. Can we, and I know fifty dollars isn't a whole lot, but can we have some type of fund that would reimburse, you know, people below a certain income level or, you know, some other criteria that, you know, that would help them out? Or we could, you know, we could do a private thing, you know, you know, too, but I and I know fifty dollars isn't going to save anyone's, you know, house, but you know, it'd be nice if there were funds available for that, like there are for other utilities.
Well, right now, if you have a, if you have a sewer collapse, you, the only thing you pay for would be the initial video. And based, so let's say you have a backup. What we require is you to bring a video and showing exactly where this backup is, we verify that to make sure it is indeed a collapse, and it's not just maybe a backup, maybe baby wipes or a big, big thing that gets stuck in there. And then, and then it's a hundred percent covered right now, Mayor Greenberg, which is the way we do it. So what I'm saying is, if you ever wanted to make this solvent or make this to where we're not having to transfer money or we don't have a long list, is to to either modify the requirements to make them a little more rigid, because ours are pretty, pretty flexible and or you know, put a cap on it, that way we wouldn't run out of, because there's been some times where we might stop doing sewer laterals two or three months at a time because we don't have the money.
Yeah, I was, I was referring to the fifty dollar sewer lateral fee that we charge everyone on their taxes. And, you know, if there's something we can do about that. And then you brought up the video cost, if there's something that we can do about that so that we don't inhibit people from, if they think they have sewer problems. I don't know that they're going to really want to foot the bill for, you know, someone to camera their their line. So, yeah, I'm not saying there's a good solution, but yeah, if there's especially if MSD had any type of a fund available for that.
They wouldn't because it's a private line, the sewer laterals are privately owned. And the reason we did it, just for the history, is because we had a lot of plumbing companies that would basically just come out and say, yeah, well, we'll go ahead and, yeah, you've got a sewer collapse. You know, and and it really wasn't a sewer collapse. So usually those companies that are coming out to clear the lines at that point is when they ask for it. And it's just a way to otherwise, we may be also getting calls out there constantly. Some cities actually have their own equipment, but then you start running into problems of timing and manpower as well and staffing, so it's not too expensive, it's a couple hundred dollars.
I had about, you know, in terms of like when we're talking about the sounds like we have two issues, we have a staffing issue, and we have a like issue, you know, having enough money to to pay for it all out of that. Is it possible, and I wasn't sure because we, everyone pays the fee, but is it possible to do some sort of sliding scale type of of program where, you know, if you, you know, have a lower income, like the city would cover a larger portion of it or all of it. And then, you know, the higher your income goes, you would cover more. Is that, you know, I didn't know if that was a way that we could help with that, but I wasn't sure if that was possible, since everyone pays the same fee.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure, I haven't seen the language in the statute, I don't know if you could could do that. We could, that would probably be a John Hessel question, I also, I think administering it might be tough. I think, I think using the capital is a I believe, I mean, I wouldn't propose it if I didn't think it was reasonable. I think the capital, the the transfer from the twenty four hundred every year, that should solve our problem as far as cash.
Yeah, I just thought you were saying like if we didn't want to do that, and I I'm not saying I don't. It's, it seems like we had to, I mean, I'm all for knocking them all out, like if we have the funds to do it, like because there's some people who've waited more than two years, you know, and to me, that creates a greater cost to us because meanwhile, if we're not going out every year and making in scoping or videoing to make sure it's not worse, then like we could be essentially creating a greater cost for ourselves. So I just thought you had said something about if we don't want to spend that money.
Yeah, well, I was just mentioning that the the cap isn't is an alternative, so I, and please don't quote me on this. I know Marty's daughter lives in Richmond Heights and she'd had it done, and I I think their cap was like five thousand. Again, please don't quote me, I could look this up if we need it. But we're one of the only cities that that don't have a cap. One thing that concerns me is we did increase this about four or five years ago. And we sold it as, hey, look, we do a hundred percent and we want to keep doing a hundred percent. And so I I think if you decide to make changes, I don't think you'd want to do it anytime in the near future because I think that maybe appear disingenuous to the to the to the voters. I think the the transfer is the best option as opposed to, I think administering, you know, I guess you could maybe look at their income, but then do you look at their assets? I I just, I don't know how you would. I guess income is probably the best way to do it.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, there's a lot of programs that run that way. I mean, I don't think it would be that hard, it'd be no, you know. But but I I'm not saying we have to, I'm just throwing that out there as a possible. There's a possible solution down the line if this is going to continue to be a problem.
Well, and and another thing that we talked about, you know, with construction and trying to get somebody, another thing that's really interesting is is when the the housing market is hot, meaning there's a lot of home sales, that's when we get a lot of these these laterals, because every time there's a home sale, they're doing the laterals. One of the things the cash will help with the with the the staffing issue is the sewer lining process is just improved over the years. And it it it's a lot less time and effort for excavations. It's more expensive though, but it's a hundred, just to give you an idea, it's about a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and fifteen dollars a lineal foot just to line a sewer. But once that sewer is lined, it's essentially a PVC pipe within the clay tile pipe. And you should never have a problem with that, at least for, you know, another fifty years, if not longer. So we've had a lot of turnover, so I'm not saying it's never going to get better. But you know, when we go out to do a break, even though we're just doing that portion of the the lateral, we look at the entire lateral to make sure there are no other breaks that could come up in the future. So every house we've been to, we should not have to go back to, at least for the foreseeable future.
I've seen third party vendors who offer sewer lateral insurance programs. Have we looked at this? I can't imagine that there there'd be any way that it would be less expensive. But it it would allow us to get out of the business and
I believe those are for areas that aren't covered, that don't have, because there's a lot of places that do not have a sewer lateral program. And you're basically just kind of left on your own, and that's what those are, those, that's third parties are more for the homeowners that don't have the insurance option. Or there's a cap. Right now, we we have, we have that option, and there is no cap, so I don't I'm not sure how that would benefit.
I can't imagine that that the insurance premium would be less than fifty dollars under any circumstance. You know, one other thought with regards to staffing. Has the city talked to you know, groups like AmeriCorps? And I'm not saying for day to day operations at all, but for perhaps projects in the summertime that that could be done, that would reduce the load of our present staff. I know there's organizations out there that provide those experiences for you know, and and they also provide the supervision because that's obviously the hardest part.
I have not, I have not looked into AmeriCorps.
They don't always provide the supervision to just, I mean, I did AmeriCorps and the program I was in, where I was supervised me, so just as an FYI.
Yeah, I I've seen on the bicycle path, you know, people on their own, and then I've, then I've seen other situations where they actually, you know, are pretty efficient.
Yeah, there's different types of programs within AmeriCorps, some are more like like working in a like professional setting and some are more like hands on, so it just would depend on what you're.
I don't want to paint like a totally gloomy picture, I know it might sound like I am, and I'm sorry if I am. Because the the park maintenance, for example, and keeping parks open, you know, hopefully that is going to be a be a thing of the past, or maybe the restrictions maybe a little less labor intensive to to keep our parks, you know, to open, keep our parks open. I mean, I'm hoping with the the vaccine being distributed more often. I, I mean, I'm hoping with the, the vaccine being distributed more often, that maybe they'll, they'll loosen up those restrictions. And like I said before, we can send any complaints to, uh, Councilmember Crossley. We have the cell phone out evenings or weekends if people want to complain about that. We do get a lot of complaints about the parks though. And I, I don't blame people. They want to, they want to go to the parks. They want to get outside and it says closed. So, uh, there are a lot of people that just go anyway, but a lot of people obviously respect the signs and want to take their, their kids in the, the playground. So do we know anything about that, Sarah? Have they, have you heard any potential softening of those, uh, requirements?
Let me go through my email because I feel like I read something where, um, I just read something about this in the past two days about parks in the county. And I am looking for that right now.
I think like pools will still at 50% right now. And, and I mean, I anticipate by the time June opens, that would probably be, you know, backed off to 75% capacity, but who knows?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on a lot of like moving factors, obviously. Uh, vaccine uptake, the spread of variants. Factors we haven't yet considered that will make themselves known in the next few months. Um, I just, am I any other ways that this pandemic can go haywire? But let me look into the parks.
Thank you. Just so everyone's aware, we, we, we're doing like Central Park, uh, you know, Ryan Hummer. We tried to do the neighborhood parks first. We get a lot of inquiries about Deer Creek Park. Why is Deer Creek Park not open? It's much more labor intensive and it's more of a regional draw. So we, we made an intentional effort to try to do the parks that we believe are patronized more frequently by Maplewood residents. It's not that we have any concerns with other, or, you know, we don't want other residents coming in. It's just, we wanted at least try to take care of the Maplewood residents first. The next park we'll move down to, which should be soon, would be Greenwood. I just got a call about that, um, last week. And I said, they're the next park to open on the list. But um, hopefully that the park opening issues won't be, won't be around much longer. So once that happens, the staffing issue, we just have to really tackle sewer laterals. I said the last snowfall, remember I said we were down two people? I had to bring somebody in to get two shifts. But if we have, if I get the, the two employees hired that I need to, we'll basically have nine that can run on a, on a truck, which basically gives us one person to still be sick. And or, you know, possibly on vacation or something when a snowfall hits and we could still do a full crew. That's where our minimal number comes. We want to make sure we can do two crews for snow removal.
Um, I had a couple of questions about that data at the end that, um, I thought was very helpful. But I noticed over the past couple of years, the number of residential occupancy permits is like doubled, uh, more than doubled. And so I didn't know if, if anyone had an idea of, is that like an indication of greater turnover among residents? Or, um, what, what that might be from? And if you don't, that's fine. I just thought it was interesting.
I noticed that as well, and I was wondering, I don't remember the dates, you know, that sun and stations start, you know, filling up and stuff. Would that have anything to do, do they have to have occupancy permits before they could? You know, I mean, I'm thinking they had to with, I don't, yeah, I thought everybody does. So would that have anything to do with it? Because I wondered that same thing.
That would definitely have an impact.
I don't remember the units either. How many or anything?
It was interesting. And if it's like, uh, if it's a evidence of maybe like, are people leaving Maplewood? Or are they not being able to afford it? And that's why I just thought it was an interesting.
I would think it's, I think it has, uh, probably more to do with those of being new residential occupancy permits. I think it's more of a turnover in housing.
And housing, you think, um?
A turnover, which is also probably causing some of our sewer lateral problems. You'll see like one year on sewer lateral 69, the next year 33, 45, 55. That's 69 and 33. Remember that was a snapshot in time. That was probably a case where we basically stopped for three months, did none. And then when we got more money and we picked that up on a, on a following snapshot. So it, it, it was the numbers, the actual numbers were probably right down the middle of, if you took 69 and 33 and divided it by two. But again, sometimes when you're looking at these numbers, it is a snapshot in time or within a period. And that, that could be causing the problems. I would say the residential occupancy more has to do with people moving in, which obviously somebody has to move out if that's the case as well, home sales.
But you're thinking more home sales than rental, uh, turnover. I, it'd be interesting to know if it's possible, just to kind of.
The rental units, those are, those are just, tho- those are basically, we'll do, um, those are in the thousands. That we're doing those on. So I'm not sure how those are tracked here, but I'll make sure to, to make that as clear as possible when we do that. These are just numbers we just kind of dropped in for the distinguished budget award that we're going to refine these a little bit more and make them a little more descriptive. So I'll look into that for you, Councilmember Schmidt, and, and let you know if my, my guess is accurate.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I had a question about the, the road salt being so much more expensive. Is that just because it's that much more expensive? But over the years, it's really gotten a lot, a lot higher. Like in 2017 and 18, um, it was like 14,000. And then now it's up to 39,000 for 19 and 20. And then, so it just seemed like that's a huge jump to me.
Those fluctuations aren't necessarily based on, um, the, um, cost for the actual rock salt. A lot of times it has to do with, it could even be a, a full year off. Because if our, if we have a, a slow year, we still may have spent a lot on the rock salt to fill all of our bins. And, and so one year may look like we, we really didn't spend much, but that's because we buy a, a, from a bad year, the following year. So it could be a case more of, um, we were just replenishing our rock salt. Uh, in, in a while back, um, everyone remembers probably the snow Maggedon when it was supposed to be this like, you know, 18 hour crazy storm. And it, and it turned out to be a, it did turn out to be a pretty bad storm. This is probably going back seven years ago. Um, we also have a, a, a separate agreement with St. Anne where every now and then we will have to, we will have to buy additional rock salt, not just for our bins, but they have a, a, a former MoDOT salt bin. It's, it's massive. It's like one of those super large domes you'll see alongside a highway. And that's what St. Anne uses. And so we will store anywhere from 200 to 300 tons up there as well. And that's only for essentially emergencies. And it was because about seven years ago, I had to pay basically twice the, um, the rate we could have got for our salt co-op at, at, at retail price when every, when everyone was running out of rock salt. I didn't want that to happen again. So I made an arrangement with St. Anne to do that. And every year, uh, for that ability to store that rock salt, they get to use our bandwagon, uh, for one of their, their events. So, um, it's basically something that worked out well for, for each city and didn't really cost us anything. Uh, they do pay our staff time, but they don't pay the rental fee.
Okay, thanks.
Other public works questions? You know, and as you said, we're doing a lot more with a lot less than other communities. And, uh, you know, so I'd, I'd like to commend our public work staff and how hard they work and their work ethic, uh, to do as much as they have. Especially, snow removal is legendary in, in Maplewood. And, uh, you know, and I think people really appreciate the, the level of service that, you know, public works is provided. So, uh, you can let them know that council appreciates their, their effort.
I'll make sure to do that. Thank you.
So, um, after public works, we don't have anything else on the agenda except a motion to adjourn.
I do have one item and Karen, I, I don't have my, unfortunately, I'm not at my office right now. Remember we talked about bumping back, um, capital one week? Do you remember? Do you have those dates? I'm going to, I'm going to tweak the city manager report if that's possible. Um, parks capital, I got to go back one week on that, just so everyone's aware. Um, I'll send that out. I'll send the notice, but I just, while I had you here, I wanted to let you know.
I'm sorry, Anthony, I have those dates hanging in my office.
I'll send that out. I just wanted to give you forewarning that that, that's coming out of, everything would go back one week there.
Okay. Any other, uh, things we need to be aware of?
No, sir.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? I.
I.
All those opposed? Thank you for everyone, uh, including mainly staff for putting it together and council for spending the time reviewing it and coming up with the questions. So.
And while I have you here, please, I want to make sure everyone knows. And I know I've said it before, but Karen Dilber has put in a tremendous amount of effort. And I'll probably bring it up every meeting until you get sick of me saying it. But I just want to make sure everyone's aware of what she's doing. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.